We found out later this evening that we were awarded $46,226 for some courthouse security improvements. We're going to go for the key swipe. It's a reimbursable grant like I discussed when we applied for the grant. The only thing I'm not sure of that's going to cover the complete price of it because a price increase has been the last quote from when we applied for it till now. So I reached out to the vendors to have them send me back another quote and make sure that we're good. But we at least got $36,226 of it covered.
Forty-six?
Forty-six.
Thirty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-six. It's...
Okay. Well, the first time you said forty-six.
Did I?
Yeah, we said forty-six.
Thirty-six, two, two, six.
All right.
That's money saved.
And then also I need Commissioner Brown is your signature. This one. Beth, I'll make a copy of this for you.
Yeah, it's just me, don't it?
Mm-hmm. You the man.
A jet hawk and signs his name realized, didn't he?
Yeah, electronic signature. Nice. I mean, still it might cost us a little bit. It's better than paying for all the... Yeah, so it's one, it'll reduce the amount that we'll be looking for to do the other improvements.
Right.
One?
One, two, twenty-four.
Two. You'd think you could remember the date, that one, that's the two.
And then the other, there's one single sheet of paper in there. You've got it.
Yeah. I was going to ask you about that.
Yeah, so that's the original quote when we got it was for thirty-one thousand, but I'm making sure that...
So this is the key swipe?
That's the key swipe. The one quote's in, it's for thirty-one, but the computer, that was them hanging on to the computer and them making the cards for us. If we get the computer and we make the cards ourselves, it's going to bring the cost up a little bit. But there's also been a price increase on the equipment overall. That second sheet of paper in there, that says subject invitation to participate in a multi-hazard mitigation plan update meetings every five years. I think I talked about this before. We have to go through the multi-hazard mitigation plan update for the county. We bring all the incorporated towns in as well as the county. We go over the hazards that could hit this county and get it approved through FEMA, the overall plan. The two meeting dates are in there, January 25th and March 12th. I do need a representative from the commissioners.
There's someone with a sticky note on it.
Ah, there's me. It's got the sticky note there, that very last piece of paper there.
Where is this meeting?
It'll be down at the annex.
Well, who wants to do it?
I'll start back with Monday.
That's a heck of a move.
Yeah. I'm ready to go back now, but...
You want to do it or you want me to do it, Laura?
Well, I'm not sure if I'm available in January here.
What's the date of it?
January 25th.
Yeah.
And March 12th.
One to two. That's kind of the other time an hour longer than the other.
The second one is, we're going to go into the hazards more.
Okay.
So the second one is more important that there is a representative there than the first one.
Twenty-fifth.
Mike, how long are they expected to last, these meetings?
The first meeting is expected to last an hour.
Okay.
And the second meeting is expected to last two hours because we'll go further into the...
I'll probably come and get it up on YouTube.
That's fine.
And so I just needed to know about, you know, better life and things like that.
Yeah.
It's my life now.
March, I probably make that up.
Okay.
Did you sign?
I think Bill's going to try to do the...
You can abbreviate it M-H-M-P.
Yeah, but I've never figured out what that was.
Okay. Just put mitigation, please. If you're trying to save room on your, in your notes, so...
The other one is March 12th.
Mike? I'm going to have a little meeting.
Yeah, I think so. They'll both look at their calendar.
Laura and I both have written it down some years ago.
Okay.
I'm sure one of those people showed up.
And then just quick note on last year's enduring needs, the Homeland Security Program grant, the barriers have been delivered. I'm just waiting for the invoice to get those paid. The trailer, the other trailer has been picked up and paid and the gators should be in this month.
Two of them?
Two of them.
When do we get to go out and play with them? I'll do a driven one. I'm ready to get one. Okay, that's cool. We have trailer to haul to the sites or...
Yes, sir.
If you need a wildcat, you wouldn't want to drive it from here all the way down.
No, that was the one trailer I...
Do they only run about thirty-five mile an hour?
Forty-five.
Forty-five?
It wouldn't take long to drive down there.
That's fast enough. Yeah. You want to go faster than that?
Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, and we are ready for Melinda. Good morning.
Good morning. Last week I touched on this a little bit about NSF checks, checks that I deposit, the treasurer's office deposits, and they get returned for non-sufficient funds or account closed or for whatever reason. When that happens, whether the check's for ten dollars or ten thousand dollars, that amount is charged back to our checking account. And you've not heard from me before on this because previously when Horizon was right across the street, that's our main bank that we use, whenever that happened, it would be thirty-five dollars, but they always refund it. So if it was a payment that was made for property taxes, if there's a phone number on the check, I will always call, reach out to the individual, see if we can make it right so I don't have to void the payment and there's no late fees, you know, but if there's no phone number, I can void the tax payment. And unfortunately, usually that means they have to pay fees, but it gets, it gets worked out. The county is not charged anything. Now that Horizon is no longer here, I have to use another bank for my daily receipts and my cash deposits. Obviously, the cash deposits, there's no problem, cash is cash. But the deposits that are made from the daily receipts that are collected through the auditor's office, from the transfer station, the highway department, the health department, Carroll Manor, money that's collected through the auditor and is deposited, brought to the treasurer and then it's deposited by the treasurer, that, those deposits have to be made at the local bank so I'm not driving to Flora every day. And the local bank will not refund the charge.
Which bank is that?
Security Federal. So the charge is only ten dollars, but still it's a ten dollar fee that the county has charged. And I need to have, I'm assuming, an ordinance or a policy to go about collecting that from the check writer? In addition to, I need to collect the funds to make it right? Doesn't happen very often, thank goodness, but I did have one that I talked to you about last week, but I did get the funds to cover the check deposited back into the bank, but I have not yet collected the ten dollar fee. That's not true. She did come in last Friday and she paid the ten dollar fee.
I thought we had something like that in place previous.
We may have, and it may be in the code, so I need to, I'll need to check it out. If we don't have, what would be the number that were you recommending?
The number, the fee? Well, as far as I'm concerned, it's just whatever the bank's charged, which is ten dollars is the fee. I mean, I don't think the intent is for the county to make money on somebody who has, who bounces a check, that we just want to cover our costs.
I would, I would put a number on it then.
Yeah, I would just say whatever, to cover whatever the fee is. Can you just, can you state it that way, that whatever the, the charge, the bank fee is, that they will be responsible for reimbursing it?
I think so.
Okay, because that fee may change. Then we...
I can do an ordinance for the next meeting.
Yeah, do we also have an ordinance? In that ordinance, does it also cover what to do about covering the amount of the check? Because in taxes, I just avoid the receipt, but if it's for someone who writes a check for seventy-five dollars for a drainage permit or sixty-five dollars for trash, and how do you...
Well, you can process NSF checks, you know, you send a cert, there's a process for it. You send a certified letter and then if you don't get paid within a certain period of time, you turn over to prosecutor.
Okay. I need to know that process. I don't have any direction or instructions. I mean, it's, like I said, it's not been an issue.
I can get that for you.
So that's what I need.
Well, I'll help out for the next meeting.
Right.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
When is our early morning meeting?
The fifteenth, January fifteenth is at eight-thirty.
It's the next meeting, right?
Yeah, January fifteenth is eight-thirty in Board of Finance.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Sheriff, I have two items of business in our list. The first one is Julie Lahey. There are the 2024 contracts with the Chamber of Commerce. She submitted it to me to review and I've looked at it and well, it's okay. It's, the, the change is having to do with the administration of the Convention Visitor and Tourism Commission. The, the chamber is now responsible for keeping all the records of the commission, the minutes and so forth. That was in the ordinance that you passed, so Julie has tendered the form of the contract for 2024 and I'll let her address it, answer any questions if you have about each. Do you have, do they have a copy of it?
She gave me a copy, just right before the meeting.
Right.
Yeah, do you need me to...
And if you want, put it on the agenda for the, since Julie's here, you can answer her, ask her questions about it.
Okay, so yes, that is the contract that we've been using the last few years with the addition that Ted mentioned and with the corrected dollar amount for the year. So that's just for you to execute since you voted to approve and the council voted to approve a couple of weeks ago. I do have four names for you to satisfy your appointment to that commission. So if you wanted to vote on that today, we could get started. Okay, so myself, Julie Lahey has your automatic appointment. Then we have Jeff Bean.
Who?
Jeffrey Bean, B-E-A-N. Jeff is the co-owner of The Rock House. It is a house dedicated for Airbnb rentals. Jeff is a registered Democrat. We have Angie Brown, who manages White Oaks on the lake, and she said she is a registered Republican. And the other appointment is Beverly Seese. She owns and operates The Delphineum. It's a bed and breakfast up on North Street in Delphi.
Okay, what was that name again?
Beverly Seese. S-E-E-S-E. Uh-huh. And Beverly just texted me and said she is a registered Democrat, so right there...
She's a Democrat?
Yes. So I know we need to probably verify that, but pending their approval that we meet the party lines, there's your four appointments for the year.
To keep it even, doesn't include you, right?
Correct. I mean, I suppose I count.
Yeah.
Okay, so I would be a Republican. So right there is two and two. And then I know the mayor of Delphi has an appointment and I believe we have to verify that political party too.
But if we're even, the mayor can do whatever he wants.
We're even, it doesn't matter, right? Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, gentlemen, you want to act on that? You want to mull it over in your minds or you want to do it today?
We act on this now and you can basically get kind of started.
Okay, sure.
I'll make a motion to approve the individual chief.
CVT, Convention Visitor and Tourism Commission.
Maybe I misunderstood there. You, you didn't verify their Republican, Democrats?
I haven't yet, I apologize. They have told me that they are, but we probably should check with the party chairs to make sure. Okay. Okay.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second before us to, what's the name of this committee?
It's called the CVT, Convention Visitor and Tourism Commission.
Convention Visitor and Tourism Commission.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. For members of the, of the convention, no.
Mm-hmm.
Convention, visitor and tourist. I gotta write the whole thing out.
Tourism Commission.
Tourism. Mission, okay. And those members are, are Julie Lahey, Jeffrey Bean, Angie Brown and Beverly Seese. And we have a motion and a second to appoint them. All in favor of that appointment, please say aye.
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 Okay, thank you.
Do you have some paperwork?
Yes, thank you.
I don't have it with me.
Yeah.
So if the board would consider a motion to authorize the chairman to sign the...
You have a motion for the chair to come in and sign that legal document?
Appointments.
The appointments. I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Now, my question that I still have is, okay, I don't have, but let's say I have a bed and breakfast in color, okay? And I'm sending you a monthly check that covers the amount of tax that I collect off those who come there.
Yes.
Do I, who do I send it to?
We will have a form. We had a form that we used 10 years ago and I will get it approved by the treasurer, but it will be like a coupon that the innkeeper can send to the treasurer on a monthly basis.
Send it right to the treasurer?
Yes. Nobody goes directly into your coffers and then the state will also do the same thing with those marketplace vendors. So Airbnb properties, once we inform them, figure out how to do all of that, then they will start collecting and automatically send it to the treasurer's office as well.
What's a marketplace vendor?
A marketplace vendor is Airbnb.com, VRBO.com, a lot of those where people can list their home and it's all done for you. They automatically will collect the tax once we inform them.
Hmm.
Yeah, so that's kind of, yeah, that way it's kind of guaranteed funding from those. It's the ones that are independently owned that have to do with themselves that we'll have to monitor.
Okay.
So, but yeah, we'll have coupons developed, printed and approved by the treasurer's office.
Okay. Does anybody have a question, Julie?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think we have a second. We need to use our addresses. We have an appointment.
Contract? It is contract.
Okay. I've printed a, a same form contract we've used for several years and the council kept the compensation the same. The numbers that are in the document are the same and all has been changed is the, the date, the year.
I'll make a motion to endorse the contract with the attorney.
I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to endorse the contract with our attorney. All in favor, left, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ted, you want to, you want to look at paragraph two?
Yep. Jeez, that's 24.
I've got all the dates for two. I'll change, I'll change that.
My beagle didn't catch it.
That's okay. You say a beagle?
My beagle, he's my assistant.
Legal beagle?
Illegal beagle.
Yeah.
Oh, that's cute.
He's your assistant or...
He probably needs glasses.
Is he a paralegal?
No, he doesn't have glasses. He, he's got sharp eyes.
And those.
And those, yeah.
It's a posse, which is better.
Okay, do you have anything else for us to...
No, I don't. That's it.
Okay, I have a question for you. Now that we do not have the common to advertise you, what is our responsibility?
Well, as far as your notifications of meetings, you, you still send it to the media that have requested notification, you know, they have to file a request with the auditor and sometime in...
That came from the Carroll County comment.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's discretionary. The auditor can still send it to whomever. I don't know if there's been litigation that's gone to the courts as to what qualifies as, as a media. I mean, I'll, I'll take a look at that, but we can certainly continue to send it.
I have no problem on doing that. I'm just saying it did come from the Carroll County comment.
Right, right. So you don't, they notified us that they're no longer printing, so you have no responsibility to send it to the common.
Well, they didn't really notify us, they put it in the paper.
Yeah. Well, you wish to continue to send it to them?
I will send it to her. I'm just telling you, I don't, you know, it's a legal thing.
So one of the things, there, there's a deadline for having meetings and so forth, live stream in 2025. They've not done away with that as far as I know.
No.
So I think we need to plan to, to have the technology to be able to do that.
I think Mr. Fincher's working on that, I believe.
He's working on that. So we've got a deadline to meet on that. So that needs to be done by July 2025, I think it is. So all of our meetings have to be livestreams. So I think technology is the first answer. I did not look at the board accounts, rules and materials on, on what we do about publication. I, I think that we have the option of going to another newspaper out, out of county that's circulated into the county. That's my recollection, but I, I've got to verify that. So there, there is a publication of notice. So there's a couple of questions I don't have an answer for for you yet.
But you think we will continue to have to publish the legals?
Well, unless they change that, relax that requirement, and I'm not sure that they may have done that. So I, I do think that, you know, our own website needs to be, and Beth is totally successful, that she can, she can post. Is there anything else that we need, they need technology from a technology standpoint?
Well, for instance, we have a scheduled meeting that was already planned for the January 10th, right, for your public awareness or whatever, for, with the public for wind and solar.
Down here, yeah.
So I know it's been in the paper once, I mean, how...
It's all over Facebook, trust me. We're going to probably have about 80 people there.
Well, that's what happened the last time too.
I, I saw it online and it was a real nice little invitation thing and I thought, who did this?
Yeah, somebody on Facebook.
There's somebody there.
Yeah. We got a lot of answers, don't we?
And I know it's been in the comment, so I'm just going to post it. That, the way I, it's okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I know years ago, it was that you had to, you had to put your legals and postings into the newspaper of record for the county, which was the common. I don't know what a newspaper really is, what's, what counts as that? And, and I don't know what qualifies them as being of record or even if this is appropriate anymore. So if you can check on that.
I'm, I'm looking at that right now.
Okay, all right.
I really need it for, like, if we have a legal for additionals, which I know there's several departments that we're supposed to do in the first of January and I, I don't know what, can you check that for me?
Yeah, I am.
Okay.
Yes.
I checked with Public Access Councilor Luke Gritt last week. You know, when everything hit the fan. And knowing that this was going to come up. And he said that the statute is pretty archaic about this.
Archaic?
Archaic. And he said, he suggested that you go to a newspaper with, with people who get it in this county. So that would be, yeah. And also, he said the most important thing is to post it three places so that people can see the posting. So that would be what, one downstairs and a, yeah, for you guys.
And with the meaning of the annex.
I think the point is... I think the point is for people to understand what's going on in their government, yeah. And I'm gonna continue to video on my own, because it's my YouTube channel, and so you can always say it at a meeting. And I'm getting quite a few, quite a few followers now.
Picking up a lot more since there's no paper.
Well, I had three hundred before. Uh-huh. The whole Delphi thing, kinda got it going. And so I haven't looked this week to see what, what the number is. But my guess is yes, people know that I'm videoing.
Well, then in light of that, we should announce to your viewers that-
Thank you, thank you for the, thank you for that, yes.
At five thirty PM on Wednesday the tenth, there will be a wind and solar meeting at the annex, which is at, I don't remember, something Cottage Street, what is it?
Four oh five Cottage.
Four oh five Cottage Street, which is out on the east side out here. And I can tell you that there is huge amount of misinformation out there about this. The rumor mills are running and it's not accurate, a lot of stuff that I'm getting. So I hope that we have a hundred and fifty people there, and they all wanna know what really the story is going on. Because we have no, no reason to wanna hide anything or do anything. None of us are involved in wanting to build a tower on our land or in our backyard or anything. We, we merely wanted to have these meetings so that the people would know what was going on. And I appreciate it being on the-
And I'll be, I'll be recording that meeting as well.
You'll be there?
Sure.
Good, wonderful.
What, what else am I doing, you know?
Okay.
Really.
So I, I don't know, I think I covered that. Five thirty PM, wind and solar meeting at the annex on Wednesday the tenth.
Are we gonna put a time limit on that, so we're not there until midnight?
I thought you guys discussed it.
What's that, Mike?
I thought you guys had discussed in a previous meeting that you're setting a limit of two hours on it.
Two hours, that's what I was thinking.
Five thirty to seven thirty?
That's what I thought you said, that we booked me on it.
And I, I can tell the people here that if there are people who still wanna talk, and they wanna talk to us individually after the meeting ends, we can do that, I'll probably state of the last dog is, probably in there, so. One of us has to go, we have to go, but five thirty to seven thirty, I guess. Okay? Camden Jackson Library Board.
I put that on there because she didn't have her certificate last meeting.
Right.
And we told her about today's meeting, so I was just putting it on in case she came.
We don't have anybody for it?
No. Well, we have Nancy in Austin, that they want-